Could I have a roll call?
John Hutzco.
Craig Smith.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Bob Wilbar.
Casey Paraski.
Great, and if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, happy April, I'm hoping it's finally spring. We have two upcoming meeting dates, one on April 15th and one on May 6th. And Pam, we have, looks like, two sets of minutes to approve tonight. I'm okay with the January 7th, I haven't read through February 11th yet, so let me just double check and make sure. Mike, I think you were here on, yeah, I was gonna say, do you wanna, if I make a motion, I need to abstain from voting, but I'll make a motion to approve the January 7th minutes?
Can I second it?
You second it, and then-
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'll abstain from voting. Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda is Saxon Woods 12 lot subdivision on Old Fishkill Hook Road and Fishkill Hook Roads. So this is in front of us tonight for review of final approval of subdivision, you've had preliminary, you had a few conditions and things like that?
Correct.
Any major changes since the last time we saw it?
None.
Okay. Michelle or Joe, Brendan, anything we need to talk about?
I guess one of the only things that's been revised since the prior meeting as we came to an amount on the bond, and that's included in the approval resolution.
Okay. And that's the 739-9?
Actually, the one that's in here is from a few weeks ago, it's been changed since then, it's, I believe it's-
718-6-
718-600.
So that's different than just the copy we have here?
Yeah.
Right. Is that a materials cost change, or just additional improvements at the site?
It changed from, as we went back over the numbers, the quantities got moved up and down and netted out to be less numbered than before.
Okay. All right, does anyone on the board have questions or comments before we offer the resolution? Scott or Tom, anything else we need to cover? Does someone want to offer the resolution then for Saxon Woods final approval?
Doesn't matter to me, I'll do it.
Thanks, John.
Resolution of final subdivision approval, Saxon Woods, the applicant is EF Corporate Park LLC, location of Fishkill Hook Road, resolution offered by Planning Board member John Cutler, whereas the applicant has applied for subdivision approval to create a total of nine building lots, whereas the action is considered to be an unlisted action under seeker for which a coordinated review was undertaken, whereas the planning board, after carefully reviewing all of the submitted materials and documentation for the proposal, determined that the project would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and accordingly adopted a negative declaration on June 5th, 2012. And whereas the planning board granted preliminary approval on June 5th, 2012, and whereas the planning board finds that there are no substantial changes between the preliminary and the final plat, and that a final public hearing is not necessary, and whereas the applicant has submitted an application for final approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues final subdivision approval for the above project as represented on the map entitled subdivision plat for Saxon Woods subdivision, prepared by Poville Engineering dated October 17th, 2008, and revised through February 4th, 2014. And be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following modifications and conditions, where are deemed necessary prior to the applicant's submission of a subdivision plat in final form. One, modifications set forth in the town engineer's letter of March 6th, 2014. Number two, no work shall commence on the site until the subdivision plat is filed with the county clerk. Number three, the plat shall be subject to the approval of any easement or deeds by the town attorney. Number four, the plat will contain the written approval of the Duchess County Health Department before it is signed by the chairperson. Number five, the project does not contain any lands to be set aside for recreational purposes. Therefore, the applicant shall pay the sum of $48,000 and for the payment in lieu of land for recreational purposes. Said payment must be received on or before the map is signed by the planning board chairperson, or this approval will be void. Six, demarcation of wetlands buffer and/or wetlands by fence and boundary of the wetlands buffer, and/or the wetlands will be set forth in the deed for the property or lots if applicable. Fence to be installed prior to the issuance of a building permit for the lot. Payment of downstream, number seven, payment of downstream drainage fee of $4,000 at or before the map is signed by the planning board chair. Number eight, the following will apply. A, landscaping shall be in accord with the May 22nd, 2012 memo from AKRF, the town planning consultant. B, easement to the town for future well access. C, all utility wires at the entrance of the road will be raised prior to the start of any construction on the site. D, the applicant to petition town to form drainage district before the map is filed. The district shall be in effect prior to the issuance of the first building permit. This is a long one. E, final approval for the stormwater and drainage agreements by the town attorney. F, street trees will be moved within lot boundaries. G, no trees will be removed from the site during April 1 to October 1 of any year. H, no provision for a sign for the subdivision has been requested. I, the applicant acknowledged that the town is not inclined to accept dedication of the roadway during the time period as noted on the plans. A performance bond in the sum of $718,600 will be posted prior to the signing of the plat. The applicant acknowledges the work for the roadway is not completed within two years as noted on the plans, that he or she understands that the bond will require an update to the account for inflation or changes to market conditions at that time. K, an environmental monitor will be utilized to monitor construction. The applicant will create an escrow account in a sufficient amount to fund the monitor as determined by the town engineer. L, an inspection fee related to the site infrastructure construction shall be as determined by the town engineer and will be provided prior to the filing of map. Is there more to that, L, do you think? No? And number nine, all specific conditions of the negative declaration will be adhered to as part of this application.
Just pause for one second there. A couple of quick questions. First, just to note that letter J looks like it was in the wrong place, so the applicant acknowledges-
Oh.
-the town is not inclined to accept dedication of the roadway during the time period noted on the plans, is letter I, and letter J started with the performance-
Oh, got you, I missed the J, okay.
And then, just a quick question, and Scott, maybe this is more for you, and number
six on the prior page, we say fence to be installed prior to the issuance of a building permit for the lot, and I think this is supposed to be the permanent fence to demarcate the wetland borders, but do we also need construction fencing or any kind of special fencing around those wetlands to protect them during construction?
Typically, we do, and we're gonna have an environmental monitor, so, you know-
So are we gonna have them monitor determine that, or do we need-
Well, as a condition of pulling the building permit, we'll have on the plot plan a temporary fence.
Okay. So they both have to be installed prior to-
The temporary, prior to disturbance, so they don't go into the wetland, and then they can do the final-
Okay.
-prior to getting a CO.
Yeah, 'cause it's looking like we're saying the fence is to be installed prior to the issuance of the building permit, which, to me, I think that should say that construction-
In conjunction with the building permit, or under the building permit.
Just say prior to the CO.
What?
Just said the fence should be installed prior to the certificate of plan.
Instead of the issuance of the building permit, okay.
That's the permanent fence, but the temporary fence will go with it-
Yeah, but the temporary-
Under the erosion control, we'll do that like with the erosion-
It's just that this isn't specific, so it's making it sound, it's describing the wetland buffers that are required, and then it says the fence is to be installed prior to the issuance of the building permit, and I don't think we would install the permanent fence before we, maybe you would, I don't-
No, I thought we did.
The permanent fencing?
Well, again, it's-
No, because, you know, if you're still taking them trees and stuff like that, you don't wanna put up the permanent fence and then having to be-
You shouldn't be taking down trees there.
I'm sorry?
You shouldn't be taking down trees beyond the wetlands.
No, but in front, but if you drop a tree in front, it happens to hit that permanent fence, so you have a temporary fence. I mean, really, if the builder wants to put the permanent fence in, but oftentimes they wanna do that towards the end.
Okay.
Okay. So-
And we think, Joe, there's no fence required in terms of the road construction, right? We're not constructing a right-of-way anywhere.
Right, yeah.
Because that would be a different-
Yeah.
All right. So construction fencing installed prior to the building permit?
In conjunction with.
In conjunction with the building permit?
Right.
So we don't have to have-
It'll be shown on their plot plan, that they're gonna put in temporary fence, and if they elect to put in the permanent, if they wanna do that, we'll deal with that at the plot plan stage.
Okay. All right. But in all events, the permanent, permanent demarcation to be installed-
No CO until we put in the-
Upon, prior to issuance of the CO.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, bear with me.
That's fine.
Okay. So construction fencing to be installed in conjunction with the issuance of the building permit for the lot, permanent wetland demarcation to be installed prior to issuance of the CO. Very good, okay. Does anybody else have any changes or comments, questions? Michelle, it's still April 1 to October 1 for the tree removals?
Yeah, it's pretty much, you have to stop removing trees about March 31st.
Okay. All right. Any other changes or updates? All right, John, you wanna go ahead with the rest?
Yep. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the owner applicant. Resolution seconded.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, and votes as follows, John Hutzco.
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good show.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is an extension of site plan approval for 376 Business Park, or formerly known as East Fishkill Business Park, amended site plan at 6 Nancy Court.
Good evening.
Hello.
With me tonight is Mr. Oliver Engel. Mr. Engel is the proprietor, the owner of the parcel we're speaking about tonight. If you remember, some time ago, we made an application relative to a site plan approval for a parcel at the end of Nancy Court, which is off of 376, in the B1 zone, up in the Fishkill Plains area. We actually started the application with Mr. Balducci, under East Fishkill Developers, and then during the course of the approval, it effectively turned over to Donovan, you know, Donovan Five, so, and we finished it up that way. There's an existing building that's there now, there's a couple of occupants, of which Metrics Technology, which Mr. Engel is the proprietor of, resides in it. The approval for the site really was for the construction of building number two, okay? The approval was granted, ultimately, April 12th of last year, the site plan was formally signed, okay? Now, what happens is, is there's a requirement that a building permit is supposed to be acquired within a year of the site plan signature, okay? The reality is of, and I know that Mr. Engel actually submitted a letter to the board to kind of explain the situation, but, you know, it's not an uncommon one, based upon the situation as it is, economically, and, you know, things are getting better out there. It was his intent ultimately to take his business and move it into this building and then open up other occupancies, but it's just, it's not a time right now for the purpose of expansion, okay? At the end of the day, if push comes to shove, and he has to move forward with applying for that building permit, then, you know, he's gonna have to do what he has to do. But what he's here for tonight is to respectfully request an extension, a year extension relative to the requirement of retaining the building permit, so he doesn't lose his approvals.
Do you anticipate making any changes to the site plan upon pulling a permit?
No.
No changes to the parking, was, do we have a cross-access parking agreement, I think, on this one?
Yeah, as part of it, we was required to, yes.
And no change to that either? Yes is fine.
Yes is fine, we like that.
Unless you really wanna hear it, the answer is yes.
Okay.
No, that's why we're here.
Joe, Michelle, or Brendan, is there anything we need to think about before we consider this, or any questions that you have?
The only question I have is, and it's because it's come up a number of times, is will there be any medical uses, and just because the parking, we've had the issue with office and medical-
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can speak on behalf of Mr. Engel, that there's, other than what's permitted for what the use is, it's not like, you know, we're fishing it out to medical use, and we wanna come in here and anticipate, if there is a modification in the use that's permitted, then we would come before the board, but there's nothing right now in terms of we're anticipating relative to the medical use of it.
Okay.
How long of an extension are you asking for?
We're asking for a year, 12 months, if the board would entertain it.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I have one comment.
Sure.
The economy is not picking up that quickly, and I'm not sure if a year's the limit for it, in all honesty.
Well-
I think we definitely wanna see you in a year, though, without-
Okay, that's the, you know, in terms of just kinda making sure you guys are on top, everybody kinda refreshes, and years go by at a blink of an eye, I mean, there is another option here, if this occurs over a period of more than one year, you know, we can file for the building permit, we can get a building permit, and then that can go for years, and then we have an extension for the building permit. So we do have other options relative to doing that, effectively, we're doing the same thing.
I know, but it just seems like a pain when the economic conditions just don't support it right now, and I think we should do everything we can to encourage people to stick around and build here, that's all.
We'd be willing to, we'd be willing to entertain, at whatever length extension that you would allow us, what we're requesting is a year. If you feel-
Yep.
-that you'd like to provide more, we'll certainly be-
That was-
No, I think that, I think at least, I'd like to hear from you in a year, and know what's going on, if there's any changes, et cetera. If other board members disagree, I'm willing to entertain any motion, but I think a year seems appropriate.
Five minutes every year?
Yeah, I don't think that's-
We can stand to see each other five minutes every year, but I-
Yeah.
We can do that.
I understand your reasoning, and you're not intending any changes of right now, so it seems pretty reasonable. Do I have a motion to extend the 376 East Business Park, formerly known as East Fishkill Business Park, for a year?
Second.
I have a motion, and if I have a second, can everyone hear the motion before we voted? Okay?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And in terms of anything formal, just the minutes of the meeting will suffice relative to documenting the fact?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
And we'll also keep track of it here in the planning office.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Pam's your friend.
Good evening. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a referral from the town board for the Hopewell Sports Dome on Route 52.
I'm stalling so they can- Torn my Achilles tendon, had surgery, so I'm off on the shelf and moving around too quickly for a while.
Can we ask how you did it?
Running. Been running for a long time, I knew this day was coming, barking at me for a couple of years. Being hard-headed, I refused to stop, paying the price. Bear with us just a second, so we can get a view of our-
Take your time.
No problem.
Made a little progress since we saw you.
Okay, make sure they can see that one as well.
Could he sit, maybe he could sit down, so that-
Okay.
If you wanted, you should, yeah, 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 move a chair and let him sit if you want.
You all right?
If you see me starting to wobble, grab the-
I'll catch you.
I've been sitting down a lot.
We don't want a wobbly attorney.
Okay, you all set?
Yeah.
Maybe, can you move the second board up onto the-
Yeah, the blank one's in the way.
Up here, so we can see it.
Let me move that behind, Dan, or just take it down for now.
There you go. Yep.
Jason, can you see that okay?
No.
All right? It's okay, I've seen it.
Well, good evening again, Stephen Feinstein is my name, I'm counsel to the Sports Kingdom folks, and thank you for allowing us to appear this evening. Dan and Denise Frioli from Asadi and from the developers are here this evening, as is Chris Lapine from Chasin, and Russell Hernandez from Atlantic State, the contractor that'll be doing all the construction work if we're fortunate enough to get this project approved. We have a slide presentation for you with some additional renderings and drawings, obviously all the plans and specifications are available as well to be discussed, and during the course of the presentation, Dan and I and Denise will have the ability to sort of walk you through it a little bit, answer some of your questions, and then focus on those issues that are most important to the board. So with that, why don't we get started, Denise, if you would, and Dan, I'll-
Okay.
Outta the way.
Feels good to be back here, I can tell you that. Thanks for having us again. I can tell you, we haven't been here for a while, but we have been working diligently to get this project underway in many ways. We, architecturally, engineering-wise, you'll see some slides here in the presentation that'll show you that, you know, a lot has gone into this since we saw you last time. We start off, this is an overview of the facility, what it should look like, you know, or ultimately, we would like it to look like. You have five exterior baseball fields, and on the inside, there are four fields that are for baseball, and four multi-sport fields. And I know there's been some comments and criticism about this being a baseball facility, and what we need, you know, I need everybody to understand, and this is not a baseball facility, it's weighted on baseball only because there are no other full-size baseball fields enclosed indoors anywhere. So this is gonna be the first of its kind from a baseball perspective, but soccer, lacrosse, flag football, softball, every type of turf sport will be welcomed here, and I'm sure this facility will be utilized for all of them. And depending on the demand, it's a very convertible facility, as you'll see in the slides that we're gonna show you to come, but, you know, it's versatile. We can change very quickly from baseball to lacrosse, and I'll get into stuff like that as we go along, but this is the primary model that we based everything off of from day one, when we approached, you know, the town. The outdoor baseball fields will also be turf, the interior will be 100% turf also, the four fields, you'll have measurements on those, the clubhouse is about 37,000 square feet on three floors, you have, and again, we'll show you as the slides progress, but let's go to the next slide and see where we are, okay. Views, you're gonna see this thing, no matter what you do, but I hope when you see it, you'll look at it as a youth sports Disneyland, a good place, a place where families and children are doing things in a positive way, it's a healthy environment, and, you know, it is what it is, it's a large domed facility unlike anything else. This is a view basically as it is now, today, and then the next slide will show you what it will look like from that same location, there's a little more greenery on the trees, obviously, but we wanted to show the shading and the barrier with a little bit of green and the dome, how in proportion it is from that street view. Now, I know we're gonna have view sheds from many locations, and we will do that with a balloon test if we're required to, as we have done in the past with other domed facilities, but this is what it will look like from that intersection, that's the west entrance to the current Lanai property. Let's go to the next, okay, so you can see them both together. Again, the dome will blend into the sky as, you know, because it's a white dome, but again, don't misunderstand me, you're gonna see this thing, you will see it, and that's, I'm not gonna lie to you, again, it's what you see when you see it, is what you need to feel here, and I think it's all positive, it's youth-based, family-based, and I think great for East Fishkill, and that's, you know, why we're here. Let's go to the next. Okay, that's an interior view, you have the four baseball fields in this configuration with the clubhouse, the clubhouse was designed, our architects designed the clubhouse in a bridge-type structure. The upper deck is very small, or, it is pretty small, and just for viewing, it's just a place you can walk up to on the top, it's really, only function is for viewing, and I'll show you the additional spaces as we go along, but you have the access point there on the left side, you'll be coming into the dome there, where our reception area will be on the first floor. Again, you have the parking area in the front, the entire front of the lot, there'll be some drawings here that you can refer to that Chris Lapine will show you. Let's go to the next. Okay, this is the breakdown. The entranceway is the top-left drawing, that's the entrance, that's the access, okay. Oh yeah, I have one of these, too, okay, let's see, you know what, there's too many buttons on yours, let's go to the right. All right, so this is your entranceway. You'll come in here, this is reception, you can imagine the staffing is pretty extensive here, we have quite a few people on staff, so you'll have most of that in this space here. Then we have plans for, and this needs to expand because, again, as we keep finding out things about, you know, the spaces we need, this is right now about a 1,300-square-foot arcade and rec room type where the kids can go and sit. This will expand and will probably move, so please don't take this as final drawings by any means, these are just conceptual, we know what space we have, we're fixed within a specific space, things are gonna move around here, but we primarily, we know our end uses, and one of them is an arcade. Over here is a barber shop, and over here, we have planned a photography studio where, you know, the kids can go in and the families can go in and view some photos that are taken of them during their games. This entire area is open, as a walk-through, and we envision, you know, snack bar type, you know, bars, juice, things of that nature, on a snack bar style, you know, venue. This area here, we have the retail space, this will be sporting retail, just to support basically, you know, needs, kid breaks a bat, you know, you need a soccer ball, you need, you know, lacrosse stick, there'll be some stuff, you won't go shopping here, you'll just utilize this most likely for needs at the moment, okay? Then this is a blank space right now, we haven't filled, but I can tell you, it will expand, it will be an expansion of either this strength and conditioning, physical therapy type area that we're gonna have here, we'll have massage, chiropractic care, we'll have some area of orthopedics possibly, that, you know, people can consult to, there'll be some gym equipment in here to work out with, if you're familiar, the best reference to a facility like this would be an ML Strength down in White Plains, a Parisi Speed School that they have, I know the one in Stanford, Connecticut, but they're in New Jersey and all over the place, Blue Street, which is also in Stanford, Connecticut, it's a strength conditioning and a place that the participants can go for evaluations, either massage, chiropractic- for evaluations, either massage, chiropractic, or, you know, orthopedic to consult. Again, these two spaces are open. I foresee the arcade getting larger and the, this facility here, the strength conditioning, getting a little larger. So those spaces will probably end up just expanded. And then you have your bathrooms. These are the bathrooms on the end, which I believe are going to end up moving to here or to here. But again, these are just conceptual. We know what we want. We just don't know where we want it right now. Moving up to the second floor, you have eight batting cages. They're back-to-back. You have four on this end. You have four on this end. You'll see some color photos like this that are going to come up in a minute. Spectator seating, if you don't want to be down by the fields, you want to be up, up on the second deck watching, you can, which is, everything's mirrored on both sides. You have your restaurant area. Again, I don't want this to be a misconception that we're going to go out and put billboards on the highway saying, "Come and eat, you know, at the King Dome tonight with your family." This is a place that will support the participants and their families, but primarily the participants because they do not have time to leave this facility during gameplay, especially in tournaments. I experienced this on a regular basis. My son plays. He has an hour and a half between games. The coach takes him. Put 15, you know, people, the participants and the coaches at a table. It looks large, but believe it or not, that only satisfies eight teams. Okay, when you have 120 seats, there's 120 seats backed out here. So this really is a support system for the participants in the facility. Again, it'll be on the level of burgers, wraps, you know, it's, you're not going to get lobster and steak here either. I mean, this is not fast food. It's going to be healthy food, but it's going to be fairly quick food. Other than that, that's, there's also a lounge here, so you can sit and relax at the, at this end here. Going on the third floor, you'll come up, you'll see this ramp and staircase coming up, just a spectator area. The only structural part that you'll be able to utilize is the center area here. Again, dimensionally, I don't know if I, do you have the square footage on that?
On the upper deck?
Yeah. This is basically 45 feet wide. I'm going to say it's 30, I'm going to say it's probably 1,200 square feet. It's going to be quite a view from up there, overlooking, overlooking the fields. Okay, so yes. So that's, that's what you'll end up with. Again, these white blocks are not structural. They, you know, this is the area. You'll come up if you want to, get a breath of fresh air, take a walk around, and head back down. Okay, let's go. All right. This is what we think it's going to look like. We hope it's going to look like this. State-of-the-art clubhouse. Again, something that, you know, really you don't see anywhere. It's just something that was designed specifically for this model. This was, you know, this just came from a very intelligent, very good architectural firm that really can design things to meet your needs, and it's very functional. And it's, believe it or not, it looks beautiful, and it is beautiful, but it's very simple. I mean, when you, when you tear this thing down and you know the, you get to understand, you know, the mechanics behind it, it's a very simple structure. That's what it should look like. You have your center restaurant lounge area here. Your pass-through here with your snacks. Again, you'd be coming in from, I believe, this side, and your reception would be here. You'd have your photography. You'd have your barber shop. And again, the barber shop, we're not looking, you know, I mean, you can come here and get a haircut, but these are for the participants that want to have these, you know, unique style haircuts to either put their numbers on their heads or put lightning bolts on their heads when they play. I mean, the kids do that. It's just, you know, anywhere from up to 12 years old, they want to be creative and they want to stand out. So that's one of the ways we found that kids stand out. Okay, again, another view. Better look at the pass-through. This would be looking down the first floor of the facility. Again, this will be all protected. There'll be fencing here. Nothing, this will not be wide open where a foul ball or a lacrosse ball or anything else is going to jeopardize the safety of anybody within this area. So everything, all the fields will be fenced, or the, or the second deck will have fencing on it. So it will be a protected area. Again, the design will, will come. This is a look from the lounge area into the restaurant. Okay, this is the spectator seating if you choose not to be on the field. You'll have rows of seats here. If, if we happen to have a venue of, you know, a college game and we take down the Little League fields, you'll, spectator seating is fixed here, the batting cage right behind it. A better view at the seats, spectator seating. Yes.
Dan, this almost looks like daylight. Is that what you guys try to?
It is daylight. When you're, when you're in, within our dome, you're in daylight until nighttime. I mean, you'll have over 1,000-foot candles alight within the structure without a single light on until the sun sets. And then, obviously, at this point, you know, at that point, we'll have to, you know, turn on our light, and there's quite a bit of light. But it will also look, because of the white structure, like daylight.
Thank you.
Another angle. Restaurant tables, seating, upper deck, and your fields. Okay, this is, this is our model. You have four baseball fields. This is, this was our vision from day one. You have the four baseball fields here. You're going to have regulation-sized fields. And probably, it was funny, I was in Mount Kisco today, and I asked the coach, I said, "How big is that field?" And he said, "Well, down the line is 200, but center field is 185 feet." We're going to be 220 feet to center field, and we're going to be 200 feet down the line. Something, you know, I've been pretty tough about in the design of this with the architects, with my wife, who was also doing the majority of this layout with the architects. We want to be 200 feet, and we want to be 220 to center. We want to play a real baseball game in here. On the flip side, our multi-sport fields will be the largest that we know of indoor multi-sport fields, by 104 feet by 210. Very large area. I mean, you could divide these and probably put a fifth field in there. But right now, again, we're going to stick with our model. We're going to be four fields. We're going to be very large. We have plenty of room in between, 10 or 12 feet in between. And again, you'll see that our dome has grown, and the reasons for this, over the period of time since we met last, were to accommodate some of the things we didn't want to squeeze, the dugouts, the people walking around. We still, we have, we don't want to call it a track, but we have a walking area around the entire perimeter, which will equal about a half a mile. If you start from the entrance and come all the way back around to the entrance, you almost have a half, or you have at least a half a mile in distance. So we wanted everything to be comfortable. Safety was a major factor in reasoning why we have done what we've done. We've increased the safety factors, we believe. And that's, that's really, again, your center clubhouse. Okay, no, that's all right. Go to the next one. This is how versatile we'll be, and one of the other reasons why the dome got a little longer. In case the multi-sports fail one season, maybe spring, maybe summer, we have the ability to be a complete baseball facility inside. We had added, we mirrored these fields here, two of these fields, and flipped them over here and added a few feet out to the dome to accommodate that. The other thing here, you also have, and that you didn't see in the first slides, are practice areas. There's warm-up turf areas here. They're about 50 by 50. So you can understand our thinking, the way things will work, is you'll have teams come in an hour before. I know when I take my Little League team to a game, we like to get there an hour and 15 minutes before. We take a half-hour of field warm-up, and then we'll go upstairs and bat, and vice versa. Some of the teams will start batting and then end up on the fields. So we were able to accommodate those warm-up areas and have the participants away from all the other areas so that they're in a space doing something. So when you're there as a participant, you're doing something. Let's go to the next. All right, this is a full multi-sport configuration. And again, financially, this makes a lot more money. But does it work? Do we need that many multi-sport fields under a dome? One baseball field rents out for what I can rent two multi-sport fields out. Yes.
Track and field, indoor track, is that possible here?
Not with the configuration of the track. That's why I don't want to call it a track, because they don't have the, you don't have the circumferences in the dome to be able to come around. That's, that becomes the problem. You're in a corner. You run into a corner, and then you have to make a left or a right turn.
Because all the schools here have to go down to either Rockland.
I know.
Or the city.
Yeah, I mean, in a straight line.
Just indoor.
In a straight line, you can, you can, you can run quite a distance. But to go around an actual track, no, because these corners would have to be cut so drastically, it would eat into the, you know, the sport field. Unless we make it larger, and I think we're okay where we are. Tom? We're going to stay where we are. Okay, again, if we felt the multi-sports were stronger, we have the ability to put eight fields here and just run two baseball fields.
So I just have a question. When you say they're versatile like this, I mean, is it, is it a matter of you're playing baseball in the morning and you're doing multi-sport in the afternoon? Or is this something that takes a couple days to transition?
No, not a couple days. I wouldn't say morning, afternoon. I would say seasonally.
Seasonal.
This will be seasonal. We can break it down. I mean, they'll, we're with the turf people now. We're trying to be as creative as we possibly can with the lines on the field. So, you know, when you have baseball fields, this area will be a different color than this area.
It's still turf.
Still turf. So we know this is going to be primarily a multi-sport field, so we probably won't change the colors here as far as having brown and then green, like a baseball field. On this side, we will have the brown and the green as a traditional baseball field. But we can line the field fairly easily and divide them into two and have the multi-sport fields with the multi-sport lines. They're just going to be included in the overall baseball, just as on this side, you would have all green and you'd just have the lines where the infield and outfield meet and your base paths. So it's, you know, we're probably three years away from fiber optic turf, where you can flip a switch and turn on and off lights in any way you can. Very costly, I'm sure, but something that will probably happen down the road, just not available right now. That's one of the most difficult things right now. And again, we're, we have a sports architect coming onboard shortly, and we're going to take as much advice as we can about doing that.
So, so when you talk about this turf, is this, is it sitting on cement? Is it sitting on?
No, it's on.
Rubber mat or what?
It's on, it's drain, you know, it will drain, and it'll be pitched to drains. It'll be a compacted soil with stone underneath. Just, just, yeah.
Gravel, gravel and sand.
Okay.
Gravel, sand, but it's compacted tight.
Gravel and sand on top of it and turf.
Than the turf. Okay.
I realize you're talking about the indoors, but I notice on the plan, all the exterior. Question for the professionals. Is AstroTurf considered pervious or impervious surface for the calculations?
It should be pervious because we have to put drainage under it.
It has drainage under it. Depends a little bit on the soil and what you ultimately do with the runoff is how it's considered. But we will be looking at that as part of the stormwater calculations.
Okay, so another twist on this would be a full-size football field, lacrosse field, or soccer field. This is larger than a full-size football field, dimensionally, I believe. 195 by 430, and we can probably, because this is shown as a football field, there are some spectator bleachers here that we put in. But you can probably expand this to 220 by 430 if we wanted to have a single field configuration on this side. This would allow for three of those in this configuration. Again, we're very versatile. We will be able to host many types of venues here depending on the demand. I mean, we want to be able to do everything. We want to have the ability to do NFL camps here. We want to have the ability to do, you know, lacrosse jamborees. All require multiple fields. So, again, a multi-field facility, very versatile. Okay, we are hours of operation. All right, this is, right now, our plan, we said, we, we're not sure when the schools let out here. We haven't gotten all of that data back yet. We don't know if we can go from 3:00 to 1:00 a.m., or that was our original model. I've been getting feedback that we should probably go 3:30 to 1:30. Obviously, 11:30 to 1:30 slot hour are going to be seniors, senior leagues. So we, we don't know, but ultimately, in a day, our calculations are based on a 3:30 to 1:30 or 10-hour day. You could potentially have 900 participants per day, Monday through Friday, in the facility in those hours. Just to give you an idea of people and flow into the town. So with 900 participants a day, those participants are the same in many instances because they're probably playing twice a week. We, we think, on the baseball end of it anyway, that you'll play twice a week, Monday through Thursday. If you're in a league, like a town league, you'll probably play Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday. But at the end of it, it's still a participant, and you're at about 900. When you hit Saturday and Sunday, you're in about an 18-hour day. Which, and again, we're not, we have 1,620 participants for Saturday and Sunday if you utilize all of the hours from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. in the morning. Again, a max. We want to give you a max on what it's going to be. Do, I, I hope we can do that, but again, you know, we don't know. We're, we're in new water here. Hours of operation, standard field layout, summer, Monday through Sunday. Here's where you can go from 7:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. At least, again, I'm a, I'm a baseball guy, so I know the baseball side of it. When you go to Cooperstown and you play in the Cooperstown tournaments, that's basically what you do, or you can do. With the four fields, not including the multi-sports fields, or converting the multi-sports fields in the summer, because we're not sure that we will have participation in the summer that would support our facility for multi-sports because everybody goes outside. If we were to turn this into a baseball-only venue in the summer months only, that number would increase by a third. But right now, in that configuration, it'll support 40 teams a week, which would equal 600 families per week coming into the community, 600 typically new families. In Cooperstown, they have 104 teams. They do that for 12 weeks or so. And you can imagine what that generates for Cooperstown. Okay, let's go to the next. All right, economic impact of the sports. I'd like Steve Feinstein to talk a little about, about the impact. He's done some research on it. So I want to turn this over to Steve unless you have any questions for me.
Is Cooperstown the closest facility that can handle these kind of numbers?
No. No, no, it's much bigger. Cooperstown has about 22 or 24 fields. You have.
What's the closest facility?
Baseball heaven out in Long Island, Diamond Nation in New Jersey.
Are you going to be drawing from those areas?
We will, on, on tournaments, for tournaments. Our Monday through Thursday will probably be, probably be a max 20-mile radius. That's what we're, we're thinking at this point. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, when the tournament venues happen, it, you can travel for hours to get here. They will. And in the summer months, it's a national, I mean, Cooperstown has people coming from California, Hawaii, you know, depending on, you know, what, what tournaments you run. If we run 12, they run only 12-year-olds. So if we ran exclusively 12-year-olds through the summer like they did, which we're not going to do, we want to be, you know, probably an eight-to-12-year-old facility. They'll travel. I mean, they'll, they'll fly here and play here. I mean, we're going, in our model, again, in the baseball side of it, we'll offer more than Cooperstown without being Cooperstown. Now, Cooperstown, again, is Cooperstown. We're not in Cooperstown. But real baseball people want to come and play baseball. They can go visit Cooperstown from here in two and a half hours if they want. They will play more baseball here at this facility than they will in Cooperstown. We're going to try to make it.
Cooperstown is all outdoor?
Cooperstown is all outdoor. Correct.
So you have the advantage.
Yeah. This will be the only place you can play baseball indoors. Unless we model this, you know, at other locations. Anybody else?
Some of the, some of the facilities that I'll talk a little bit about in discussing economic impact are facilities in parts of the country where weather isn't as big of an issue as it is here. So facilities down south and in the west that have multi-sports and large baseball sport facilities don't have to dome their facilities for winter use. So some of their numbers are comparable because they get to operate year-round. The theory of doing this inside of the air-supported structure is to equally level the playing field, if you'll excuse the pun, so that our kids can participate year-round, not just during, not just during the good weather. The, some, some basic numbers that may or may not be surprising to you. According to the NASC, American families spent $7 billion traveling to youth sport tournaments during 2010. That was the last year that the NASC did a study. And that's gone up at 4% annually. These, these tournaments, the summer-use tournaments, the weekend tournaments, is a important part of the business plan. And the traveling part of it is a very important part of why we. and the traveling part of it is a very important part of why we believe it brings economic benefit to the town. It's not just from the, from the folks that are within a twenty-mile radius who don't have to travel to get here, other than to get in the car, while they will spend money, while they're here. It comes from the tournament travel, where they, as Dan mentioned, some will fly, some will pile their kids in the minivan and drive for six or eight or ten hours to get here. That's the experience that, that Dan and Russell have handled personally with their children, and that people all over the country do. And that, that travel, bringing folks from out of town, is what drives hotels and tax revenue, the restaurants. These folks are here for days at a time, so they're not eating in the facility for dinner that night. They're eating with their families. They're not having breakfast in the facility. They're eating with their families, and that's, that's obviously beneficial to the town. According to National Sporting Goods Association, at least two-hundred-and-eighty million children between seven and eighteen participated twice a week in one or more of the seventeen sports activities, and of that, twenty-six-point-nine million participated in baseball. Now, again, I know Dan has stressed the fact that there's a multi-sport approach here, and there is. And, and that's been the case from the start, but a lot of the numbers are based on baseball numbers, 'cause that's what we know. That's what Dan and Russell know. And so, I wanted to give you some basic information on some baseball participation. The USSAA has estimated that team rosters have grown from a thousand in ninety-seven to forty thousand by two seven, two thousand and seven. I tried to get them to get me some updated numbers. They said they were working on them, and they thought they'd be out very soon. And I'm suspecting that you're gonna be over fifty thousand team rosters, and Sports Magazine Event says tournament play is a major growth area for baseball. Again, this speaks to the issue of these tournaments, which we think are very, very beneficial to the town. The youth sports market, two-point-two million players on seven thousand teams play Little League baseball, sixty thousand participate in the AAU baseball, and eighteen hundred youth baseball camps exist across the United States. That market is desperate for quality fields, quality fields in the wintertime, and when it gets cold in the fall, and before the spring thaw. We can all appreciate perhaps this year more than most just how advantageous that would be to have a heated facility. There was some discussion about the Cooperstown facility and a question. There are three facilities that we've studied, because we believe they are, in many ways, the state-of-the-art. Again, these are outdoor-only facilities, but they have greater numbers of fields than our outdoor number of fields, so we think there's an analogous type of, of business going on here. There's Cooperstown, Dream Park, and then there are two Cal Ripken facilities, one in Aberdeen, Maryland, and one in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. Now, the, the Cooperstown facility has over twenty fields. The, the fields in Myrtle Beach, there are seven fields, and Aberdeen has eight fields. Those are full-size fields outdoors. So, there's probably a little bit more of analogy in terms of the number of fields to Aberdeen and, and Myrtle Beach, and, but Cooperstown's really considered the, the state-of-the-art, and we think we compare very favorably to those fields. At these facilities, because of the tournaments, I wanted to give you a sense of the facilities, the hotel facilities, that have been built to support these tournament plays. Courtyard by Marriott, directly on-site, Myrtlewood Villas in Myrtle Beach, Dayton House Resort in Myrtle, Spring Hill Suites in Aberdeen. These are just some of the hotels that have been built to support the baseball facilities, the sports facilities, and we're certain that, that some, something very similar will happen here. Economists talk about demand-side effects, and so I talked a little bit about the demand-side effects of the, of the project on each fish scale. Of course, we, we certainly believe that there're gonna be positive effects, both locally and regionally, by bringing so many people to the town, on employees, vendors, on participants. This is clearly gonna be a high-end recreational complex that will attract new business. So, in addition to the, the interior improvements and the small haircut facility and the, the small workout areas, we're expecting, we're hoping, and the experience for other communities has been, that these kinds of high-end facilities bring other businesses to the town. When you bring additional folks to the town, when you bring exposure and notoriety to the town, you will see additional businesses come to the town to help support that and to help, and to take advantage of that for themselves. There was some very good specific information that I was able to glean on the impact of these kinds of facilities at locations across the country. Down in Decatur, Georgia, they built a, an eight-field facility like this, again, all outdoors because of the weather, and it was reported in, in their local newspaper that they brought in as much as a half-million dollars in income from one weekend of an eight-field baseball tournament. And, and of course, they took into a lot, the stores selling sporting goods, restaurants, such as in the top right, where families go when they're not obviously in the facility, entertainment and recreation for these families, some of which, which may not be already in town, some of which, which is available regionally, and some of which, which will be brought to the town, whether it's movie theaters and other entertainment facilities that, that can be brought to the, to the town to help support the additional folks that are here. Frank Brown Park in Panama Beach, Florida. Again, this is a, this is a nine, a field or ten, I think it's nine or ten-field facility. Again, all outdoors because of its location in Florida, but the same basic demographic approach. They have eight tournaments that are held, and they generate seven million dollars in local revenue from those eight tournaments. That was reported in the, by Scott Carroll in the News Times Herald, the local newspaper serving this area. So, we were very impressed with that, that number. We're very familiar with the sixteen-field facility in Rehoboth Beach, Delaware. Obviously, larger in scope than our facility, so there would have to be some appropriate reduction in the gross dollars. But Steve Miller, the tourism manager, said that for 2013, the impact of the youth sports tournaments on these fields for that town in Rehoboth Beach was seventeen and a half million dollars. That was brought into the town as a result of the, the tournaments that they run throughout the year there. Now, Rehoboth Beach, Delaware does have an off-season. It's, it's not far enough south for there to be year-round play, but it's a more temperate climate, and they're able to get certainly a longer season than the outdoor season would be here. But again, with the use of the indoor facility, albeit somewhat smaller than a full-size facility, we think that, that gives you some sense as to the, as to the size. I wanted to also, there's not a slide for it, but I wanted to point out some, some research that I found recently about Ripken. They were hired to develop a facility that's presently under consideration in Port Charlotte, Florida, which is sort of in central, central southern Florida. And so, they did a feasibility study for a six-field design. They have three existing fields, and we're gonna add six additional fields, so it would be between nine and ten fields. And the Ripken folks estimated that economic benefit to the town, lodging, transportation, food and beverage, entertainment, shopping, related expenses, on the low side was five and a half to six and a half million dollars annually, and the creation of sixty-eight jobs. And on the high side was ten and a half to twelve million dollars annually, and an estimate of a hundred and thirty jobs. So, again, we wanted to give you a sense of, of what those who do this sort of thing and have done it repetitively, the kinds of numbers that are, that are out there, that I think would, would drive the, the economics for the town and for the region very, very significantly.
Have you done any studies to hone in on this area?
Not a specific economic study, where we brought in economists to go through the, the specific demographics of this. We tried to extrapolate from similar facilities that were proposed by others. We haven't done a specific economic study for this, for this location.
Can I ask a technical question?
Sure, of course.
Because I'm just curious. It's an air dome.
Yes, it's an air-supported structure, right.
With pressure differential from the inside and outside.
I'm sorry?
I mean, it's pressure differential from the inside and the outside.
Very, very slight.
Yes. We do get some bad weather here. I don't know if you noticed the pile, there's still some piles of snow, which I drove up tonight.
I know. We, we live in the area, too.
And we do get power outages.
Yep.
Okay, now, power goes out. I noticed the dome is rectangular, even though it's a blow-up, which is an unusual shape to me structurally, but that's okay. Okay, if power goes out, dome comes down, two feet of snow. What happens?
Absolutely nothing. The system's been designed to deal with, with all of that. Dan can speak more specifically about the backup systems, but I've done work with the Saudi from, it's twenty years, in domes all over the world, including areas where the weather is much worse than it is here, Alaskan pipeline, Siberia, places like that. There's a, first of all, the engineering takes care of snow loads to provide sufficient pressure by the blowers to make sure that the facility will stay in its shape regardless of the amount of snow that falls.
Other backup generators?
Oh, absolutely. There's a complete backup system. It's-
Sorry, I didn't know that. I just-
It's, and it's done automatically and seamlessly. It's all done on-site. There's, there's three levels of backup. And keep in mind that the, even though it's rectangular at its base, the entire thing is shaped in such a way that the snow doesn't, doesn't pool atop. It does come-
Right. That's why I was figuring tower outage collapse. I didn't know how long-
All built into the system for many, many years, to deal just with those, and every kind of unusual circumstance that you can imagine.
Did you hear mention? I thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure.
Good evening. My name's Chris Lupin with the Chazin Companies, and I'm kinda pinch hitting tonight for Steve Trinkus, and it's kind of ironic, because we're talking baseball, and so, I've been asked just to kinda give an overview of what the, kinda the site characteristics are going to be for this particular endeavor. Access to the site will be along Route Fifty-Two. There's currently two means of access. There's one with an existing traffic light along Roth Road. The intent is to activate that light. The applicant's also in discussions along with the town with IBM to open up South Gate Drive as well. So, that would provide a direct link out to Lime Kiln Road. When, in speaking about kinda the direct link there, the intent also is, along with Brightland Solar, is to dedicate the perimeter access road to the town as a town road for the property. Parking for the site is going to be accomplished by approximately three hundred spaces to the north and west of the facility. They've also entered into a shared parking agreement with Brightland Solar for an additional five hundred spaces. This is kind of a unique facility in that there really isn't a off-site parking count based upon the municipal code. What, what they used was a parking ratio based upon occupancy or square footage, which they've kind of ascertained from a similar project that they had in Danbury. It's not quite the same scale as this project, but to give them something in terms of relativity, in terms of the parking needs, that's what they've developed for the site. I know one of the comments from your consultants has been for kind of a breakdown, explanation of that. I know they've conducted a cursory review. The applicant intends on giving you the breakdown based upon some of their similar facilities. Some cases, there will be buses that drop players off and some of their families. There's a bus drop-off here on the western portion of the site. Within this area where I'm shading here is a bus storage area. There may be, they typically experience one or two, maybe three buses, but they'll be able to park them while the players are, are inside. The facility itself is equipped with a thirty-foot-wide kinda access road around the perimeter, and the intent is twofold. One is kind, serves as a snow storage area as the snow falls off the dome, and the other is for emergency access. The intent is, snow along this portion of the property along the east side, and maybe a little bit along the northeast and northwest, would be, snow would be blown into their astroturf fields, where it would then melt or store during the winter. The remainder of the site would be plowed. They would have, they would either sub it out, or they'd have their own equipment on-site to actually pick it up with backhoes and relocate it to snow storage areas, which are shown on the plans along the western portion of the site. They also have some over here as well. Sanitary sewer for the project area is intended to connect to a future municipal line that's being brought to the site. The intent is, there's going to be a sanitary manhole in this vicinity that then discharges out to Route Fifty-Two to connect to the municipal system. They're gonna connect to the existing Shenandoah Water Line along Route Fifty-Two, and with regards to traffic, they've received the cursory review of comments from your town consultant. My understanding is they're going to engage your town consultant, but some of their initial review of this has been based upon what the nineteen eighty-four EIS for the west campus was based upon, which took into account not only a one-point-two million square feet of development on the parcel that exists today, which only one million square feet was developed, but it also considered what was going on on the east campus at the time. You know, things have changed since then. The east campus has modernized. There's been more of a focus on production and less labor-intensive, so arguably, there may, there may not be any impacts associated with this particular project when comparing it to the nineteen eighty-four EIS as a whole, but they're gonna leave that up to your town consultant. That's been their initial investigation on this. Stormwater management, they're gonna continue to utilize the existing stormwater management facility, which kind of is a retention pond in the front of the property. The review of this is that they're gonna expand it to include some wet extended detention. They've provided a stormwater pollution prevention plan to the town consultants, and they're awaiting some feedback related to that. I guess we're willing to open it up to the, any more, any comments or questions?
I think you're forecasting sixteen hundred people per day, fourteen hundred?
Yeah, that's, that's-
It's a max.
That's a max.
So-
In, in our model, again, we're judging, we can cut this a million different ways, but in our, in our model, it was sixteen hundred and twenty, I believe, on the weekends, only on Saturday and Sunday, because you're, you know, you don't, you're unlimited with the, unlimited, but you're within hours of seven AM to one AM during the week. We have, and we know things will happen during the day, but they're not gonna be, you know, the place is not gonna be booked out completely. We will have programs going on in the day. We're not sure what they are. They're not in our model. It's gonna be based on the demand.
I was curious with the, this, is there any sound dampening, because the residents are right on the-
Our, our dome is being manufactured with a, a double wall. You won't hear anything on the outside. You shouldn't. I mean, it'd be very, very quiet because of the triple wall that we have. Again, Danbury would be a great example, because we put a triple wall there. So, if you hear anything, it'll be muffled. You know, it won't, you're not gonna be in your home and hear this. No way.
There's concern about some kind of generator or compressor. Is that gonna be audible off of site?
It shouldn't be. It's gonna meet the codes of the town. I mean, they'll be within the decibel range to code.
Because I actually have heard already from some of the people who lived across the street, and they were actually thought this was a great idea.
Okay.
Because they, you know, what's happening there is not good.
Okay. No, again, it's, it's what, you're gonna see this thing, it's how you see it.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, really, that's what it comes down to.
The dome itself, does it actually come all the way to the ground, or is there some sort of kind of wing wall that goes around?
What we did was, we, we put a ten in this plan, different than the last plan that you saw.
Okay.
We decided to mount this on a ten-foot concrete wall around the entire perimeter. The reason for that, again, number one, safety, because in any dome that you go to, the weakest part of the dome are the connections to the doors, because of snowslide, or whatever reasons, movement. That's the most vulnerable area. Not that it's a problem, not that it's anything that, you know, we have thousands of domes out there. It's not a problem. But we wanted to put our doors through solid walls, so that they will not, there will be no boots on this dome whatsoever. You'll come straight in through the concrete wall. The dome will sit on top of it. We have structures like that out there. It just, it's clean, it's neat, it's easy to remove snow around the perimeter. That way, it's gonna cost us a lot more, but in the end, I, I think it'll be peace of mind.
So, so, you or somebody made reference to snow sliding off the dome. Are there ice breaks or something like that?
No, it's slow, the, the snow will not just come like an avalanche. It'll slowly come down, and it'll accumulate- come down and it'll accumulate at the base of the structure, which happens to be the base of the wall now, and then it'll be removed with a, you know, with a bucket loader.
One of the things to think about, and when I first started learning about structures, it didn't occur to me until somebody told me this, that is, you know, in the wintertime, of course, it's heated inside, and so the, the ambient temperature of the outer layer of the dome is actually higher than, than it is outside, so it hits the warmer dome and it actually serves to melt it, so what you get, first and foremost, you get a certain amount of water runoff, and then eventually you get some snow coming off, but it doesn't, as Dan said, it doesn't sit there and then all of a sudden here comes 16 feet of snow.
It's like a radiant floor, it's when it hits, it's melting. There's also a wire mesh system around the whole, it's about a snow break, there's a wire mesh system that wraps the whole dome, which essentially works like a snow break if there wasn't even that issue, but there's enough fall backs and I put the radiance and everything else, then you don't have that.
So you don't have issues with, like, melting snow and then icing over when the temperature drops at night, or doesn't happen?
No, because we're heated, we're, we're going to be heated, especially when the snow, we increase the heat to keep, create that melt.
Also, it's a Teflon coated structure, it's not susceptible to that sort of temperature change, the material that this is made of.
Light pollution. I assume if it lets daylight in unless you've got a. It will not, it will not transmit light, it will glow, you will see it as a glowing object. And the sky's going to glow. You're not going to be able to go read the newspaper next to the dome. Okay. That, that. I was just curious how light. No, a lot, it's a great question. The stars are going to go away. Yeah, no, you'll, no, there'll just be another planet that you'll see. No, I'm serious, when you get light pollution and you try to do star observations, they go away because the light. No, no, you will not have that, there, there will be no light pollution. Again, you can see some domes at night, so you can get a feel for that.
So the lighting that you're going to have indoors, is it actually on the dome, hung from the dome?
We suspend our, our, our lights from the ceiling of the dome.
So I'm assuming you use full cutoff fixtures and things like that to help limit light shining upwards?
Correct, correct.
Bleachers outside, I noticed none of the fields have bleachers, are, are you planning any kind of portable bleachers or anything for?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be, they'll be.
Area, I'm sorry, there's an area to each side of it that holds up to 40 individuals.
Okay.
So, so, yeah.
I could tell whether those were dugouts or.
Right here, dugouts and, and spectator area.
Okay.
So this dome's going to sit in front of the building that's right there?
Correct. I, I may be able to give you a perspective, can you give me a perspective on a dome that's 75-foot high in front of a 30-foot building, do you have that? Just the, the visual of it, do you have that? Just to give you an idea of height, you know, because height, again, is going to be an issue here, and we talked about that from day one, but when you, when you, that's my kids', Christmas card, two years ago. No, well, either, either, or whatever, have you, but again, the mean height of a dome is about 50%, and there, I think we have an example of that, which we, okay, you, you really can't see a 75-foot dome behind a 35-foot square building, and that's an image that we will get to you, and we'll get you some real hard photos and, and examples of what this should look like up against a building. So if you were looking north, from the backside of the existing building, even though this is 160 feet, and I, I don't know what that building is.
About 40 feet.
It's not going to look like you think it's going to look, it's visually very different when you see it than when you think about it at 160 feet. Again, 160 feet is absolutely at the dead center of the top of the dome, it drastically changes as you move down the sides.
Are we taking away from parking from any of the other buildings? Because it looks like you are.
You know, there are, I don't know how many parking spaces there now, I don't know what their uses will ultimately be, but we, we have come into an agreement in perpetuity of 500 spaces that are allocated to us.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about, because I'm just, I'm looking at a satellite view right now.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like where the bottom corner baseball field is here, so you have that one, no, no, that, right, right there, no, that, the baseball field.
Yeah.
That's covering up existing parking.
There were existing, right. This is what I guess, accommodate this facility. There were spaces that probably went to.
Yeah.
Do you have an overlay?
Just want to make sure that I understand what eliminating part you did. I understand, I'm just saying.
I understand that, but I, I think, you know, this will get to be about a third the number of people that used to be at IBM.
I, I.
Now we know that. Including IBM, and.
I, I believe, I'm all for this, I'm just telling you that. That there are less spaces, right, exactly.
So for some of these larger tournaments that you're talking.
We've created some in the front. We've created 300, 307 spaces.
For their facility.
For our facility. You know, if you remember.
If we were to build that, if, if we were to fill all those other buildings, I just want to make sure there's.
Well, if you recall what, there was an amendment made to the zoning ordinance that gives the planning board the ability to, by special permit, allow share parking, and so that this would be, they would be sharing some of the backspace, then if the back buildings come in before you for reapproval, you'll have to balance out their parking needs vis-à-vis the sharing. So obviously, they may have a greater need on the weekends for that overflow parking, and whatever, we don't know what's going to come in the rest of the site, so they may have to build more spaces, or it may work out that the sharing's off hours, so.
So, but, but I think we should talk about parking, because when you talk about some of these tournaments and numbers of families and things like that, do you anticipate being able to park everyone at this site, or do you anticipate having to bus folks in or something like that from other sites?
We feel on a, on a day-to-day basis, we don't feel, we will need to utilize, in our experience, the other 500 spaces, when that will probably happen, or during tournaments, when you have tournaments.
Okay.
It's a lot of drop-off and a lot of carpooling, not a lot of drop-off, a lot of carpooling and a lot of, you know, the coach takes four or five kids.
Isn't this facility based on tournaments?
No, not at all, no, in the summer, you'll have a lot, you'll have 600 families that come through there, and then, yeah, but again, they're not all there at the same time, they're staying.
Cooperstown runs 12 tournaments all.
Correct, but, again, their parking, if you analyze their parking, you'll see that, that, when that game is over, the, the family comes with their car to see the game, and then they go back to the hotel. So you're not staying there. You know, they're, they're moving around the area.
I, I, I think the point being is the family's not going to stay here all day long.
Correct, and, and as the kids get older, the less participation you're going to have with the family staying there.
But I think you would have to accommodate, if we're looking at some type of tournament, you'd have to assume that during the period of transition, ending one game, starting the next game, probably got twice the number of people coming in and out.
We ended up with about 807 spaces, which I think would be more than enough to accommodate any showcase tournament or jamboree, and again, if we're talking multi-sports, if this is multi-sports, you have more people. So, you know, again, it's a balance, and it's also about, when you're playing multi-sports for one hour based, as opposed to a two-hour baseball game, you're alternating, that traffic's changing constantly also.
There's also, you have sometimes like an hour, hour and a half of games.
Sure.
I'm sorry, well, during that period, I mean, it's, worst-case scenario, just down that road, perimeter road, there's probably another 700 spaces right there, just boom.
We asked for the 500 spaces because that's what we were recommended to ask for, but the truth is, they were willing to give us 1,000 more spaces. I mean, we can up that if we have to, I mean, we, we have pretty much unlimited parking.
But I think the key here though also is, the number they came up with is based on their experience in other facilities.
Sure.
This isn't their first priority here, so they, they actually have some logic that they backed into with the number here.
And Danbury was four to one, that was their, you know, was based on occupancy, so if it was 1,200, it was, you know, four to one.
And some kind of cross-sharing with John Jay.
I'm sure there are plenty places to park if we needed to, areas we could utilize, you know, if you have, again, outside of our model, if we had a concert and we were approved to have, you know, a mass of people, we're obviously going to either make a, a deal with the onsite as much as we could get, or we're going to try to make accommodations offsite and, and bring people in.
Dan, you want to mention something about, you know.
Right, again, we, I think we spoke about this, I don't know if it was before the planning board, but if there was a disaster where the town needed to utilize the building to warehouse people as an emergency shelter, we would also be able to accommodate that at whatever number your max would be for the town, because you can imagine under eight acres, with the auxiliaries that we have to run the place through any kind of weather and power outages, it will be a shelter that, you know, that you can utilize.
When, when you last presented here, you were very baseball-centric, and we asked some questions, and kind of drew out of you maybe it could be a multi-sport facility, but you really didn't spend any time on that.
Only, only because I know much more about baseball.
You started your presentation, you went to the multi-venue, and then you went back to baseball.
Sure.
My concern would be, well, I understand your expertise is baseball, and, and probably your business plan is based on, on baseball. Anything else I would assume is maybe icing or something?
No, not really, it, again, we're, at the end of the day, we're renting turf, that's, that's, that's our, what we have to do, to satisfy our partners, our investment, we have to make sure that turf, turf is booked, any way we can possibly do it, and if it's complete, a complete football facility, if that's what this area calls for, it's going to be a football facility. It's, again, baseball is stressed because that's what I know, and it's also something that isn't done anywhere else indoors, so that's why it's a heavy baseball presentation for those two reasons.
No, I understand that, no, I understand that fully. My concern was, are there other venues that could have more of an impact on head count, participation than baseball?
Sure.
And, will that be part of the planning process, I mean, worst case, you come up with a worst case?
We will have worst case, if we were going to be 12 fields, 12 multi-sport fields there that change every hour, which is, is unrealistic, I, I think, and again, you don't want to overbuild this thing, or, or, you know, I mean, again, worst-case scenario, you have 12 fields with 30 players on a field, as opposed to four fields that are changing every hour, because you're going to assume that there's going to be 12 players and three coaches, whether you're playing soccer, you're going to have 15 participants on each team playing each other, baseball the same, but baseball is a two-hour venue, the soccer is a one-hour venue. The baseball field is twice the size of the soccer field, so if you double that, you're doubling the occupancy by turning that into two soccer fields as opposed to one baseball field, with a turnover of every hour.
No, I appreciate that, your, your passion is, is baseball, and there's no question that you, you know what you're talking about. Excuse me. My question would be, are there other venues that you haven't really discussed that could impact occupancy even more than baseball or soccer or football?
Participate-wise, if you compare a lacrosse jamboree, again, depending on the size of the field you give to the venue, you could have more occupants in a lacrosse or a soccer, you know, tournament or soccer showcase, if this is going to be a weekend of just soccer showcases where, you know, coaches are going to come down, and the kids are going to be evaluated, you know, you're catering to a, you know, whole different group and, and a multiple of more people at that point. Yeah, yeah, ultimately, at the end of the day, if, if the 12 fields are an option, you're going to see the occupancy go up, because you have now 12 fields, instead of, instead of nine.
Non-sports venues that, that are possible?
Non-sports, absolutely, concerts, we, we feel we would like to, and again, through special permit application, I believe we have to put in a permit over 1,000 occupants, we have to ask for a special permit and use, we would like to have and host concerts or, or, you know, venues, other.
Shows.
Yeah.
Oh, this could, this is an amazing possibilities, I mean, just, it's almost unlimited, the possibilities that this facility could draw to the East Fishkill area, I think, I think it's great.
The, the New Hampshire Dome hosted the Democratic primary at one time, I mean, I forgot how many thousands of people they had in, in our New Hampshire Dome, and we had some photos, I think, sent around, I can have them next time, it was, it was pretty incredible, they lit up the dome inside, it was really a beautiful environment, I mean, there are so many things, they announced the, I think it was the iPad at the time down, we built a dome for Microsoft, and they did a whole presentation down at Central Park in the city under, under the dome, there, there are a lot of venues that I'm sure, again, our model is, is sports, and I'm hoping I have no time for any of that stuff. If we're full with baseball, soccer, lacrosse, flag, that's what we're designed to do.
You're, you're in habit.
We're in habit, we're, we're in sports, sports Disneyland, so, you know. It also addresses the local community in lots of ways in terms of universities, Dan and I were texting back and forth last night, there was, there was a newscast on ESPN which talked about how many games in the northeast have been canceled for girls' softball, because they can't play them. We feel that that'll be a big menu. Not just here, Maryland up to whatever, Maine, especially in New York, so you're joking around saying, you know, any local Vassar, any local university, University of Connecticut, any of these guys would be silly not to guarantee that when they have these tournaments, they're in our, they're in our facility.
Now, timing-wise, do you need infrastructure support in place before your dome is done in functioning?
Yeah, Russ is obviously going to be developing the site from a construction.
Well, I'm not even talking about the site, I'm talking about the area.
The area.
If you plan to bring lots of people in.
As far as hotels?
Everything, everything, hotels, restaurants.
Dan's very sorry to be talking to all the leagues, we've been, not all of them, but a lot of them have contacted Dan directly. We're getting quite a bit of play, you know, I, I probably get a half a dozen phone calls a week about different, different leagues, and soccer people, and lacrosse people, and baseball people, and hotels have contacted me from Route 9, you know, the word is getting out, and. It makes sense to hire local, I mean, this is. Yeah, I mean, we're going to have quite a few employees here, so. A lot of, we feel there's a strong demand for, for maintenance to receptionists and directors of, of possibility. And some of these concession areas also will be leased out, and that was a question that was on the table at some point, you know, we're, we're not looking to run necessarily our restaurant, it's, it's space that needs to be satisfied, criteria by us that needs to be met, but at the end of the day, it, it'll also bring opportunity possibly to people to actually operate with inside the dome. The barbershop, the.
So the dome's not going to operate all?
All the square footage?
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 it will, it will not, we have, again, we have our model, we know what we want, we know what we want it to look like, so there will be a specific criteria to meet, but outside of that, I mean, we're, we're going to have our hands full managing the sports side of this facility.
Will you put the restaurant in if nobody else does?
I, I think somebody will, that's, I mean.
I agree.
I think any, anybody that'll look at the numbers of, of the masses that are being drawn into this facility would be crazy not to. Will we, will we do restaurants to the restaurant tours, will we, will we do the strength for this, will we answer them?
How will we be confident that teams from East Fishkill will have time to play and that it won't be folks drawing from other areas that are maybe willing to pay more or something like that? We've got a lot of.
That's a great question, you know, I, we're going to meet, I think, on the 6th with the Recreation Department, I think they meet on the 6th the next time, and we're going to have an informal meeting, I need to get some input from what they do, what they need, and we're, we're going to make sure East Fishkill gets their time, when they need their time.
Yeah, I'm sure that you are.
Right.
Go for it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll get, they'll get specific time.
Okay.
You know, and, and. Will John Jay come in and ask for specific time as well? Especially during the day, you know, John Jay, right next door, I mean, again, I don't think that facility's from, you know, early in the morning until 3 o'clock, I mean, there's going to be plenty of time during the day also for, for the schools to utilize the facility.
And you do show a path connecting.
Yeah, we did, we do have a path connected from John Jay in between the two full-size fields there, yeah, that comes straight in, so we, we know they're going to come at some point, you know, we don't know what time, but they will, they will get, you, they're going to have, the town will have preference on, on slots before, you know, somebody from, you know, Aberdeen, Maryland comes up here. And again, I don't know what your demand is, I, again, I spoke to a soccer, somebody heavily involved in soccer, they said there's a huge soccer contingency up here.
Eight fields across the street, right?
Yeah, and that's why, that's why we have to be flexible, because I think you're going to utilize those fields across the street, you're not going to want to pay me to come in here, because again, we have to air-condition this facility, so there's a cost involved in, in air-conditioning at eight acres, I mean, you think about what your home fuel cost is, so between the heating and air-conditioning.
But it's the winter months, that soccer's got a lot of.
Right, I'm going to want them to come in in the winter.
But they're playing in gyms today.
But I.
Because they're playing around all the.
And that's, and my son used to, I used to get up at 5:30 in the morning, drive my son up to the. my son up to the Gold's Gym where his coach held practice every Sunday morning. You know, we were, had to be on the quarter to seven, we had to be up in the Gold's Gym and we worked out in there. That was the old lumberyard, I think. And, uh, you know, we do it. As parents, we, we do those things, but we're going to try to make this as convenient and comfortable as possible.
Okay.
The, the one thing I wanted to add with regards to the economics, uh, I've got a nephew who plays travel baseball during the summer, uh, travels six to seven weekends out in the summer. My brother spends between $500 and $600 a weekend in the community that he's in between hotel, eating out and any other essentials that the individual need. They don't have necessarily retail space, they can get a bat or a glove or any other thing, or slapping pants, but he's spending that kind of money during the summer just for one child, he's got a family of four. So if you think about 100 valence a week, uh, would that transform your first local economy?
Yeah, I, I think you're going to get, you know, the existing businesses in town and I, and again, it will generate new businesses coming in here for, I'm sure you'll get applications, you know, after this goes up. It will, there's a, there's a great example out in baseball heaven. We spend a lot of time in Long Island at Yap Hank in tournaments. There's a little cafe, it's called Cafe Gia. It's a pizza place, Italian restaurant. It's swamped from day one tournament opening right until baseball heaven facility closes down at the end of November. It would be a great facility to, uh, restaurant to call up and say, hey, guys, what happens here in March, from March until November? They are, you can't get near the place. There's an Applebee's next door, there's the hotel that we stay in. If you don't book eight months in advance, you're not getting a room. I mean, we very rarely, and, and if you look at their cafeteria and their style of food, we're going to be very similar, very rarely my family will eat at baseball heaven in their cafeteria slash restaurant. We, we go out, the team stays with the coach if they can't leave, when they can leave, they do leave. The team will actually go out and, and, you know, go eat in, at offsites if they have at least two hours in between games. There will be, you know, and, and this is year-round. Again, baseball heaven is seasonal. This is, this'll, this should be a year-round influx of, you know, revenue for businesses in the area.
There's also businesses already starting to heat in around our site due to the fact that we're coming. There's, we are beating, um, facility.
Right, across the street, we understand that, that, I think you're, you're representing.
Route 52 property to locate.
And, and.
We think that people are, I mean, that's just, we're so far away from this, you guys have no idea, and people are anticipating the anticipation that happens.
Yeah, one of the doctors had called me and, and asked me some questions and I told him, I, I think it would be a great asset to have you nearby because unfortunately, the machine we keep feeding is more, 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 more. The wear and tear on these kids with the more, 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 more leads to guys like that. Got to go see the doctor, rehab. So, you know, it, it happens.
You might mention that again, Dan, please.
Too much running. So, so the rehab is, it will, you know, it's, again, a great complement to what, what we have going here. And I hope a hotel, you know, environment will exist on, on the property at some point also. And that's, that's our.
Locally, if you have to call any restaurants, uh, you know, in Chester, they have these small baseball complex. They just generates, uh, pretty decent venues during the summer. If you go up and down 17K there between Chester and Ocean, uh, you can call the Applebee's, the Olive Gardens, uh, Saturday and Sunday, they're packed. You can't get in there in the weekend. Uh, you know, that's what they have all, 17K, you just keep traveling, you can find a restaurant. Uh, but that's something locally that would give you an idea of, uh, type of business.
How, how long will it take to develop this property?
From the minute we get to go, in the green light, it's going to take me about a year to build the dome. And that's, it's really tricky because we have to end up in the right season and that's, that's why the mad rush here to get all of this work done before we probably should spend the money we're spending is to accelerate this process as quickly as we can because, you know, the clock ticks for us as the dome people. Now, I change hats to the dome guy. I, I would not take a chance and install this dome November, even October, where there could be snow. Because you don't want to lay out this eight-acre dome and have it snow. It would be a disaster. So if it's going to take us a year to get the dome on-site, it's probably going to take us four weeks to install and inflate. Once we're inflated, it doesn't matter what happens. You know, the construction's going to go on, Russ is going to build the clubhouse inside, it's, it's, that'll all happen, you know, he'll be able to go and, and do that in a climate-controlled area, it'll be the easiest build that he ever did because it's indoors. So, leading to that though, we need to get this dome started soon. That's, that's our crisis right now because it will take us in man-hours with our facility, we know, a year. I can probably.
Sound vacation offsite.
Right, up in eastwestern New York. Our factory's in upstate New York, by the way.
How are you going to build that structure inside once it's inflated?
We have an airlock. Uh, do we have a picture of the airlock? It may be on that drawing. There's a 15 by 15 airlock, so.
It's here.
Oh, okay, right here. Let's, let's look right here. See, see this?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that has a door.
Trucks to go in and out.
That's an airlock. It's 70 feet long and you'll put a, be able to put a tractor trailer in there, close the front door where you came in, open up the other door, pressure comes in, pressurizes itself and you're, you're in.
Is it your intent to spread the gravel and the turf surface, everything after the dome is in?
No, we, we would like to have the turf down prior to the dome.
And then you'll stretch the fabric out.
Then we'll put the.
But you'll leave your, uh, retail piece out.
Yeah.
That would be in the way.
The clubhouse, yeah. We, we've done it, we do it, we, we put up and down the Jack Cus facility in New Jersey and it's a nightmare. You have cranes, you have tears, you know, it, it starts getting messy. We want this to be a very clean installation and, uh, then we'll come in and hopefully bolt that thing together real quick.
How long do you figure to build the, the center thing?
What do you think?
It's, it's almost like a Lego set, so we figured about three, four months. It's not much to it, Seth.
No, that's okay. The, the dome itself, what's its, what's its lifespan?
We have domes now with the, the materials. I'm not, you know, we used to have to change the skin every 15 or 20 years. We are using the finest fabrics available today with a Tedlar coating on them. We're not anticipating having to change that shell for 30, 40 years.
Okay.
This was a referral from the town board. What is our?
I was going to have Tom give us a recap.
What is our indelible to the town board tonight?
Okay. Um, obviously tonight was the presentation, was hopeful that by your next meeting, if you have any comments, because then we have to just tweak some of the laws that are being proposed. Then the town board would like to get that at their April meeting if possible. And then at that time, uh, as was alluded to, the town board, uh, has, has already circulated for lead agency. They're going to then discuss with the applicants setting up the balloon tests where they'll actually erect some balloons at various points. They'll also select, uh, various areas from which, uh, the photograph should be taken to give the, the concept of what it will look like. And so it's optimistic, but I think doable that on their, uh, April 27th meeting, they'd be able to get that going. And then based on what the timeframe is for doing that, we'd be able to schedule the town board's public hearing on the, the amendments to the zoning code and any comments in the secret process. Uh, so that would probably be like the May, end of May, beginning of June. And then it would come back to you for a quick site plan overview, the details.
Could I propose that based on what we just heard about the need to kind of time this thing, we cooperate as much?
Well, we'll certainly cooperate, but state law has certain time periods that you got to wait, so, you know. We don't want to get all the way through it and have somebody go, whoops.
There's a need to cooperate.
Hopefully that goes without saying.
One question on, in, in the event of a fire and that material burns, is there any toxic fumes that come out of that?
It's non-combustible, it does not support combustion. It meets California Fire Marshal's Code, I think it's 701 F or P, 701P. It will not support combustion. So if anything, it'll melt and then it'll just put itself out and stop.
Okay.
That's why we haven't had to sprinkle our domes, ever. You know, there's, there are no sprinkler systems required.
But if there's a fire in the.
That'll be independently handled per code.
Okay. How about smoke that goes up into the dome? Is it ventilated? I mean, you can't.
The air change in, in an eight, in any, most domes are about five air changes per hour.
Okay.
So it, it exhausts very quickly.
Your dad said this one has more.
This one has more?
Dad said hour per hour.
You'll have, you'll have eight changes, is that how it is? Okay, so you'll have eight, eight turnovers an hour.
There was a dome of similar size that covered a land, but there was a fire in the land though, and we just need chase, like it burned all of the top, you know, the cover of the dome opened up and then it just, the fire in the dome stayed up and the fire exploded out the fire out.
The chemical waste ignited and burned a 50-foot diameter hole. The dome never went down.
So if there is a fire, how do you get fire apparatus in there?
Inside?
Yeah.
Uh, as far as the air, you have the airlock to go in there, but you, they would bring in hoses.
Forty-two.
They would come through, you know, you have emergency exit doors around the entire perimeter.
So you could leave the door open and not have to worry about anything?
You could pull right, no, you'd pull right up at the emergency exit door, it would open, you could bring your hoses right in.
Actually, you should just have, you should probably make it so there's connections in there to put hoses to.
Again, we'll, we'll cooperate with the code and do what we have to do.
I think we have a code for it yet.
We've seen, well, you know, the Fire Marshal or the Fire.
That's chapter X, domes.
Again, not something that's typical in, in a dome. I, I believe in, in Danbury, they might have put a hydrant inside. I'm not sure. There was talk about it, but, um, not something that's typical.
Right, yeah, just a connection point right to the wall.
Yeah, again, with, we, that, those are the details we need to know so we can incorporate them into our plan.
Okay.
I like it.
So, Tom, back to your point, it seems like the board should probably get any comments we want to offer back to the town board over to Pam if we could before our next meeting. And we'll consolidate them and bring them back to the whole board to just quickly review at our next meeting as well and then we can pass them along to the town board.
Fine.
Other questions or comments or anything else that you guys?
That's, uh, really about it unless you have questions.
It's an exciting project. It's very interesting.
We're very excited. We, we really want to make this happen for East Fishkill and us.
If you don't mind. Sure. The upper level?
Yes.
Where you have the main spectator court?
Mm-hmm.